Hello, I'm Jay Jermaine Bay with the Lodi and Moore's Pardigm, Monté Colorado. Today is class number fifty, class fifty. Well, what did we learn in class forty-nine? Well, we started learning more about the blueprint. What blueprint? The International Court of Justice in the case known as France versus the United States of America of nineteen fifty-two. It's starting to show more of the blueprint on how to enforce your treaty provisions. But what else is this case letting us know? That the answer to the test is not the United States of America's Constitution. That the answer to the test is not the enforcement of the Constitution of the United States. That the answer to the test has always been the supreme law of the land, which is what? Our Moore's Treaties. It's always been that way. Thus, the reason why the colonists put in their Constitution Article Six, Section Two, that the treaty is supreme law of the land. What we're doing right now, we're making history. As Moors, Aboriginal Moors of Morocco, we must understand that right now, we're literally falling in the footsteps of our Aboriginal ancient mothers and fathers. Our ancient mothers and fathers got into treaty trade. They got into treaty relations. Trade and treaty with who? Foreigners that was in our land. And some of them foreigners look just like you, and some of them don't. But they were all on the same team. So, we start going through this class right now. We're enforcing constitutions. Why are we enforcing constitutions? Because that is the first legislation that all Moors have to do. What's that called? The Law of Restoration. Moors keep talking about reparations. Your reparations is you having your own legislation act to repair. Reparations mean to repair. What are you repairing? Your sovereignty. What is the first sovereignty? Statehood. Moors think reparations have something to do with a check. No, it has something to do with check in the box of statehood. You must understand, this is about restoration. When you restore something, that means you're repairing something back to its original form. So, the Aboriginal Moors of Morocco have to return to Morocco. And the Moors that were British Moors need to go home if they don't want to get back and submit to the entire laws, submit to the entire laws of the Empire of Morocco. This must be understood. Aboriginal Moors of Morocco are not Americans. You must understand that. Okay. Let's get into the class. Now, we left off talking about France versus the United States of America, right? Well, like I tell you, we always open up about constitutions. This is the answer to the test. You're not enforcing the Constitution of the United States of America. That was a misconception. Was it wrong? No, it was just out of sequential order. You cannot enforce this until you have this. This constitution here, Moors Constitution, this is the Constitution of Ampac. Ampac now can enforce this constitution. So, what's happening? You must do things of what's called equality. Treaties are about equality. All this time, we're talking about enforcing constitution. Wrong concept. Why? Because you need a constitution in order to enforce this constitution. It's unequal when you don't have a constitution. You need Moors constitutions to enforce the United States of America's Constitution. When these two constitutions come together and you recognize each other's having both full powers. The United States of America got full powers because they had elected officials. And Moors don't have full powers because they have elected officials. When you recognize both sides have all their constitutions in place, what do you do next? When states have disputes? You put the constitutions down, and you pick up what? Treaties. I've got four treaties in my hand. Why do you enforce treaties? Because treaties is the supreme law of the land. But you can't enforce treaties until you first have what? Constitution and state. Because all disputes are between states. Constitutions cancel each other out, then you go straight into the treaties. And the treaties talk about who? You. And you've got two statuses in these treaties, only two. One is a competent Moore of a Moore's state enforcing laws. And the other one is a stateless Moore that they refer to as being Moroccan subjects or Moroccan proteges. There's two statuses in these treaties. And the United States of America is enforcing the status of Moroccan subjects and Moroccan proteges on you because you have been classified as a Moroccan subject. Why? Because you're stateless. You don't have a constitution. You don't have a state that outlines your dominions, your latitude longitude, your fixed territory. So, they're enforcing constitutions on you, or should I say treaties? Because they got a constitution, and they got our treaties enforcing it on us. Why? Because we don't have constitutions. It's not an equal game. So, if you don't have a constitution, and they got a constitution, and they're enforcing treaties on Moors, you can't compete. You can't play chess. The Moors right now are trying to play chess, politics, strategic game with the colonists. And guess what? If this is the colonists, they got constitutions in each one of their fifty corporate states, don't they? The United States of America has a national constitution, and they're enforcing treaties. What do the Moors have? What do we have? You know what we have? We're trying to play chess. We're trying to play political chess, but guess what? The United States of America got all their pieces set up, and they're engaging, right? Pretend the chessboard is the land. This is the land we're fighting over. This is northwest of Mexico, right here. But guess what? You can't even compete. You can't compete because you don't have a state. There's no right manner. There's no equality. We keep talking about enforce this. We're helping them to stay in power because we don't have our own constitutions. We have no legislation. We can't even compete because we don't have a team. Your team is the state. They got a team. Here it is, right here. That's your team, and they're enforcing these laws. Where's our laws? That makes us stateless. Because we don't have a constitution. We gotta understand this, Moors. It's a lopsided game. So, every game we're playing, we're playing with what? Our abstract. We said our divinity got us playing. Where's your divinity pieces? I don't see them. It's in your head. I get it. You're playing chess in your head, but in reality, you have no pieces to compete with. This game is a game of abstract and reality. Where are your pieces on the land? You can't compete. So, what is your chess pieces? I'll show you what your chess pieces are. Your constitution. You play with your constitution. That is the pieces. What are the other moving pieces? The treaties. Your treaties, Moors. Your constitution and the treaties are your pieces. These are the pieces you're supposed to be playing with against them. So, if you don't have this, how are you playing chess? How are you playing political chess? How are you ever gonna be on a fifth dimension of chess where you don't have no chess pieces? You can't even compete. That must be understood. That's why Ampac is here. So, we can learn how to enforce our treaties. And you can't enforce a treaty without a constitution. Let's continue. All right. We were going over France versus the United States of America, nineteen fifty-two. This is the last paragraph we left off on. It's kind of a lengthy paragraph. We'll read again as an overlap before we move on, okay? All right, Mother. So, will we go ahead and start from the top?
In the absence of any treaty provisions dealing with this matter, it has been contended that a right of assent can be based on custom usage or practice. It is unnecessary to repeat the reasons which have been given for rejecting custom usage and practice as a basis for extended consular jurisdiction and which are largely applicable to the right of assent. It is, however, necessary to point out that the very large number of instances in which Moroccan laws were referred to the United States authorities can readily be explained as a convenient way of ensuring their incorporation in ministerial decrees binding upon the consular courts. In that way and in that way only could these laws be made enforceable as against United States nationals so long as the extended consular jurisdiction is being exercised.
All right, thank you, Mother. So, out of this paragraph, at what time did it mention the enforcement of the Constitution of the United States of America or the enforcement of the Constitution of the United States? Or the Constitution for the United States of America? Or the Constitution with the big U, little u? All words spelled little, all words spelled in red? Does it say anything about enforcing the Constitution of the United States of America? No. What does it say? It says to enforce your treaty provisions dealing with matters. What matters? Any matters that you're trying to make binding on who? On the United States authorities. Then the ICJ tells you, "In that way and in that way only could these laws be made enforceable as against United States citizens so long as the extended consular jurisdiction was being exercised." That's the answer to the test. That's the be-all, end-all that Moors should have been enforcing. But guess what? You can't enforce what's called Consular Courts without a state. You must put these in proper sequential order. What's the first order? What's the first legality? First enactment? First legislation that Moors had an obligation to do? Enact the Constitution. Nobodrawli established the Constitution. He was not successful in his ratification and depository and enforcement. But Moors have to understand in the twenty-first century what Nobodrawli was trying to do. He told you the half hasn't been told. Here's the other half. All of the Moors have to enact constitutions for each territory. And after you enact the Constitution with its three branches of government, now the legislative branch, which is nothing but matriarchs. The matriarchs write the legislation. They pass a bill, they write a bill. That bill now is sent to the executive branch, which is the second branch of your government. The legislative branch does what? Signs it into law. And after that, they do what? They send it over to the Consular Court, which is the third branch. And the Consular Court does what? The Consular Court gets to work doing what? Issuing ministerial decrees that will be binding on the United States authorities. Without this, we will fail. Without the constitutions, Moors constitution, we will continue to fail. And you know what they say about insanity? Insanity is doing what? Doing the same thing over and over again, expecting a different result. And Moors have been doing the same thing over and over and over again. And what have they been doing? I'll tell you what they've been doing. Saying enforce the Constitution, enforce the statutes of the United States, enforce sterde decisis, enforce rest judicata. We've been saying this for over a hundred years. Has it worked? No. The Moors have been saying, "Hey, man, the paperwork isn't working. The paperwork isn't working." Guess why the paperwork isn't working, Moors? Because we haven't been following the instructions. What instructions? Statehood instructions. So, the ICJ is trying to tell you, Moors, it's all about what? Your own treaties. And the provisions of your treaty. And dealing with matters. What matters? Matters are dealing with the United States authorities. And how do you deal with the United States authorities? Well, how do you ensure their incorporation of your laws? Your writs and affidavits from Consular Court? You issue them ministerial decrees, which is judgments, orders, and opinions from Consular Court to make it binding on the United States authorities. This is very important. All right. What we're about to read next. International Court of Justice now is gonna break down three specific things that Moors need to know about how do we enforce our treaties. They're gonna show you that you have to enforce it through Consular Court. They're gonna show you that that's the only way you can do it. And they're gonna say to the United States, "United States, if y'all don't like what Consular Court said, you're gonna have to bring your issue to the ICJ or you're gonna have to bring your issue to the Consular Court of those Moore's states." That's the rules of the game. But we're also gonna learn that the ICJ said Moors can't do anything to violate the United States treaty rights because we're in a bilateral treaty, and they got every right to enforce the treaty on us as well if we're doing something that's contrary to that treaty. Let's get started, Mother.
The problem arises in three ways, which must be considered separately. The first is in cases where the application of a Moroccan law to United States nationals would be contrary to the treaty rights of the United States. In such cases, the application of Moroccan laws, whether directly or indirectly to these nationals, unless assented to by the United States, would be contrary to international law. And the dispute which might arise therefrom would have to be dealt with according to the ordinary methods for the settlement of international disputes. These considerations apply to the decree of December thirtieth, nineteen forty-eight, which the court has found to be contrary to treaty rights of the United States.
Okay, now, keep in mind, the ICJ is making a judgment about when France was bringing this suit towards the United States, okay? So, this last sentence about this, about the decree of December thirtieth, nineteen forty-eight, that was the trade agreement between France, the United States, and several other Christian states, okay? But we need to look at this from a Moors perspective, all right? "The problem arises in three ways which must be considered separately." The first is in cases where the applications of Moroccan law to the United States nationals would be contrary to treaty rights of the United States. So, if Moors issue a law that's contrary to the United States, the United States can now bring that dispute to Consular Court and say, "Hey, man, this violates our rights." If Moroccan courts don't correct the problem, the United States can always bring it to the ICJ or the Secretary General if they have an issue with what we've issued from Consular Court. But let's continue. "In such cases, the applications of Moroccan laws, whether directly or indirectly to these nationals, unless assented to by the United States..." So, remember, the word assented to means has the United States agreed to a contract, okay? Agreed to the United States. Let's start all over. "In such cases, the application of Moroccan laws, whether directly or indirectly to these nationals, unless agreed to by the United States, will be contrary to international law. And the dispute which might arise therefrom would have to be dealt with according to the ordinary methods for the settlement of international disputes." So, what's the ordinary method? The ordinary method of settlement? The ordinary method for the settlement of international disputes? Well, that can be found in your treaty piece in French of Article twenty and twenty-one. And what does it say? They still have to bring their dispute to Consular Court. That's the first ordinary method. If they feel as though that adjudication was not favorable for them, then they have to bring it to who? The ICJ or the Secretary General of the United Nations. Those are the only options they have, okay? So, anytime you see ordinary methods for the settlement of international disputes, they're saying first go by your treaty provisions, then bring it to the United Nations. All right, let's continue. "These considerations apply to decree of December thirtieth, nineteen forty-eight, which the court has found to be contrary to the treaty rights of the United States." So, why did the ICJ say that what France was doing to the United States was contrary? Well, first you have to remember, when you read all of this, for those Moors who went back and read the case, what you found out is that the ICJ told France, because France at the time was acting like a power attorney or vice-sultan, France was overseeing the Consular Courts of Morocco. But France at the time had put a bunch of French judges in the Consular Court pretending to be Moroccan judges. And the ICJ said, "Nah, those courts are tainted. You gotta rid." So, there is really no Consular Court to even deal with this matter. That's number one. The United States didn't have an opportunity to take it to a competent court to fight it, okay? Because there was no competent Consular Court. The second reason why is because France was trying to collect the taxes on the United States, and they couldn't do it. Only Moors can collect taxes. Only the Sultan at the time could collect taxes. France was trying to collect the taxes by using a Moors treaty. So, they advanced, to their advantage. So, then the ICJ said, "Nah, you can't do that," you know? All right, let's move on.
The second way in which the problem arises is in cases in which the cooperation of the Consular Court is required in order to enforce the Moroccan legislation. In such cases, regardless of whether the application of the legislation would contravene treaty rights, the assent of the United States would be essential to its enforcement by the Consular Courts.
Stop. Okay. So, this is the second, right? Because we're about to get into the third. That's the second. Short paragraph, but it's a powerful paragraph, all right? It doubles down on the paragraph that we read earlier, right? So, this, the second way doubles down on what we read here about ICJ was saying Consular Court was the only way to get the enforcement. And in that way and in that way only, right? Okay, so, watch what the Consular Courts, excuse me, what the ICJ says next. We're doing correlations right now, right? Correlations, using discernment. "The second way in which the problem arises is in cases in which the cooperation of the Consular Courts is required in order to enforce Moroccan legislation. In such cases, regardless of whether the application of the legislation would contravene treaty rights, the assent of the United States would be essential to its enforcement by the Consular Court." So, what's happening? The United States would still be under the enforcement. They would still be enforced by the Consular Courts. Meaning that any orders that come out of the Consular Courts, the United States is still bound to it, no matter what. But if the United States got an issue with it, who do they have to bring it to? The Consular Court to challenge the decision. If they don't like the, if they don't feel as though the decision was favorable, who do they have to take it to next? UN, Secretary General, and the ICJ. But until then, they're still bound to it. It's still enforced by Consular Court. So, Consular Court can enforce all Moroccan legislation, no matter what. That must be understood. Let's just pause here. The answer to the test for Moors to enforce their sovereign rights is Consular Court. And the United States is bound to Consular Court judgments, orders, and opinions, no matter what. If they don't like it, then they have to reject that application, that order. And what do they do in order to reject it? They gotta bring it back to a Moroccan court. They still don't like that appeal. They can't get their appeal. They gotta take it as a state dispute to the UN. This must be understood. Did the ICJ tell them to enforce their constitution? No. Is France saying they're enforcing the Constitution of the United States of America? No, I'll say it again. Is France using the Constitution of the United States of America in order to enforce their rights on the United States? No. This entire conversation is about what? Treaties and Consular Court. We gotta understand what's happening here. Okay. Number three.
The third way in which the problem arises is in cases where the application to the United States nationals, otherwise than by enforcement through the Consular Courts of Moroccan laws, which do not violate any treaty rights of the United States, is in question. In such cases, the assent of the United States authorities is not required. Accordingly, and subject to the foregoing qualifications, the court holds that the United States is not entitled to claim that the application of laws and regulations to its nationals in the French zone requires its assent.
All right. You see what the ICJ just said, finally? They just closed out this particular decision. They're letting you know. Listen. "The third way in which the problem arises in cases where the application to the United States nationals..." What's the application? The ministerial decrees. What's the application? The judgment. What's the application? The order. What's the application? The opinion from Consular Court to who? The United States. Against who? The United States and its citizens, right? That's the applications. What are the other applications? Any Moroccan legislation. Once your state enacts laws through it, whatever you say, okay, let's say you don't wanna take the jab. Your state says your nationals, Moors nationals, don't have to take the jab. And then Consular Court sends the United States of America, your Consular Court sends the United States of America, your Consular Court tells the United States of America, "You shall enact legislation that says you cannot try to enforce any Moors nationals to take the jab." Okay, who enforces it? Consular Court. Okay, listen. "The third way in which the problem arises in any cases where the application to the United States nationals..." So, when you put forth applications of legislation that affects their nationals, and their nationals are both their governments, their departments, their agencies, their agents, their administrators, as well as their citizens. This is a catch-all phrase when they say nationals. Nationals means even their federal government and their so-called corporate state governments, right? "Otherwise than by enforcement through the Consular Courts..." So, let's start all over. "The third way in which the problems arise is in cases where the application to the United States nationals, otherwise than by enforcement through the Consular Courts of Moroccan laws, which do not violate any treaty rights of the United States, is in question. In such cases, the assent, the permission of the United States authorities is not required." So, when Moors do the right thing, when we enforce our Moroccan law, what else is our Moroccan law? What else is our Moors law? The treaties. So, between our constitution and our treaties and any legislation that we write through our state, as long as it doesn't violate the treaty rights of the United States, the United States is bound to whatever law that we have in Morocco. "Accordingly, and subject to the foregoing qualifications, the court..." Who's the court? The ICJ. "The court holds that the United States is not entitled to claim that the application, excuse me, of the laws and regulations to its nationals in the French zone requires its assent." Read it again. "Accordingly, and subject to the foregoing qualifications, the court holds that the United States is not entitled to claim that the application of laws and regulations to its nationals in the French zone requires its assent." in the French zone requires its assent. What does this mean? We never have to get to the permission of the United States to establish our constitutions. We don't have to get their permission to claim our international borders. What international borders? Listen to me. Here is the map. The Moors have to fill out with their states. And your state is claiming a dominion. What dominion? Let's use AIPAC as an example. AIPAC has claimed this latitude longitude of this state. These borders formerly known as the State of Colorado, these borders used to be borders that were inside, inside of the United States of America. These borders were not considered international borders. But as soon as AIPAC claimed this state, our borders immediately became international borders. And all other, anything outside of it is foreign to us. Everything on inside is our dominions. Everything on the outside is foreign. But this border is what you call international borders. And we don't have to get the United States of America's permission to proclaim and declare our new state and our new international borders. That must be understood. Moors gotta do some research, alright, to understand what I just said, I won't go any deeper. We'll get there on another class, okay? Alright, so that's the end of the reading. That's as far as we're gonna go with France versus United States of America, alright? Now we're gonna go back and do some recap, okay? Because now we gotta understand, what did we just read? We read a lot about consular jurisdiction, and then we read about what? Does the United States have the right to tell Moors they have to get their permission first? See, the ICJ says, first of all, listen, that the United States has a right now, any Moors that are what you call Moroccan subjects. Any Moors are referred to as what they call Moroccan proteges. Any Moors that are what you call stateless all come under jurisdiction of the United States of America and under the jurisdiction of the United States. How? Because our own treaties, Moors, listen to me. Our own treaties is what the United States is using to put us into bondage. They have a limited jurisdiction over us. That's not what AIPAC says, that's what the ICJ said, right? We learned that in our studies, right? That the ICJ gave the United States of America limited jurisdiction over us, alright? But let's go back and reflect, that's what we're gonna do today. Let's reflect, we gotta prove this, cuz some Moors is just watching this video for the first times, first time they're seeing the class, like, what is AIPAC talking about? United States of America don't have jurisdiction over Moors? Okay, let's go back and review. Moors should be very familiar with this now, this is called a summary page of France versus the United States of America, nineteen fifty-two, okay? We're gonna go down to what they call section two. We're gonna read again for the record that Moors at home who have a nationality card can understand your nationality card falls under the status of section two. You're gonna learn why in just a minute. Your nationality card falls under section two of the summary. Mother.
Number two unanimously. With regard to consul jurisdiction in the French zone of Morocco, the United States is entitled to exercise such jurisdiction in accordance with the terms of its treaty with Morocco of September sixteen eighteen thirty-six. That is to say, in all disputes, civil or criminal, between citizens or proteges of the United States.
Thank you, alright. So the United States of America and the United States International Organization. Number two unanimously. Unanimously, with regard to consul jurisdiction in the French zone of Morocco. So there in Morocco, the United States is entitled to exercise such jurisdiction in accordance with the terms of the treaty with Morocco of September sixteen eighteen thirty-six. That is to say, in all disputes, civil or criminal between the citizens of the United States of America and who? Moroccan subjects and Moroccan proteges. That's what protege means. Stateless Moors. Protege means. Moors Americans. Protege means. African Americans. Protege means Negro blacks and colors. Protege means anyone that's stateless. Okay, that must be understood. So Moors with a nationality card, and your nationality card is not, did not come from a Moors state? Then automatically, you come under protege status. And if you come under protege status, then the United States is entitled to the jurisdiction of civil and criminal over you. It's that simple. Okay, let's go to section three, mother. So we can double down on this, so you can show you what the ICJ is trying to tell Moors.
Three, by ten to one, it is also entitled to exercise consular jurisdiction in all cases, civil or criminal, brought against citizens or proteges of the United States to the extent to the extent required by the provisions of the Act of Al-Jasiras relating to consular jurisdiction.
So wait a minute. Did the ICJ say this constitution of United States of America is holding Moors in bondage? Or did the ICJ point out that your own Moors treaty, the Act of Al-Jasiras, is holding you in bondage? Let's read it. Okay. Section three. It is also, who's the it? United States. The United States is also entitled to exercise consular jurisdiction in all cases, civil or criminal, brought against citizens or who? Moors with a nationality card. Cuz Moors with a nationality card means you're stateless. It doesn't say nothing about a state on here. You are a protege, you are a Moroccan subject, that's the truth. I know Moors don't wanna hear that, but you have to understand, this is the International Court of Justice trying to tell Moors the truth. Your treaties are putting you in jail, Moors. How do I know? Listen, what did they say right here? Again, the United States of America has jurisdiction over you. What? The treaty of what? Treaty of Morocco of eighteen thirty-six. It's putting Moors in jail. Why? Because we're not enforcing it through our own states. The ICJ gave Moors, excuse me, the United States of America jurisdiction over you with your own treaty. Then they doubled down and said what? The Moors who have a nationality card, who are proteges and subjects, also are in bondage by another one of your Moroccan treaties. So they pointed out this treaty of eighteen thirty-six was the Treaty of Peace and Friendship. Eighteen thirty-six gave the United States of America civil and criminal jurisdiction over Moors. And then they turn around in this section and said, the United States of America is entitled to exercise criminal, criminal, excuse me, civil and criminal jurisdiction over Moors that are proteges, and what are they using? Listen. We gotta take our time on this. This is very important what we're going over right now. Cuz Moors think that the United States of America doesn't have jurisdiction over them, and they do. The United States of America is using what? The Act of Al-Jasiras to have civil and criminal jurisdiction over you, even though you got a nationality card. Why? Why? Because we're stateless people. And what did they say about stateless people? Let's look it up. Stateless people. International law says you're stateless. Listen, a natural person who is not considered a national by any country. Let's break this sentence down. Cuz Moors gotta understand what has been our problem. The whole time, we thought our divinity gave us freedom, it did not. Our treaties gave us freedom. And the only way we can enforce our treaties, we have to have a state. In the meantime, what's happening? We're stateless persons under international law. Did it say we were listed stateless because of the constitution of the United States of America? No. It said you were stateless under international law. A natural person who is not considered a national by any country. So you have to replace country with what? State. Cuz they're talking about states. Moors are not a national of a state. Oh, you say you're a national of a state? Tell me the name of the Moors state government you pledge your allegiance to. Tell me the name of the state that issued you this nationality card. That the Moors state issued this nationality card? And if the answer is no, guess what that makes you? Stateless. And what happens to stateless people? Listen. The Stateless Persons Convention of nineteen fifty-four. Look at this date. What happened in nineteen fifty-two? France versus United States of America came out. And they recognized the Moors were stateless, that's why the Moors couldn't enforce their treaty rights, cuz Moors could only bring a dispute to the ICJ if they had a state. So therefore, nineteen fifty-four, the international law got together and passed what? The Stateless Persons Convention. Because of who? Moors. They did this for the Moors. Nineteen fifty-four, two years after the judgment. Nineteen fifty-two, France versus United States of America. Nineteen fifty-four, the International Court, excuse me, the United Nations gets together and tries to point out to the Moors, you know why y'all ain't got no rights? It's because y'all stateless. Y'all are not refugees, you're simply stateless. Let's continue. So the Stateless Persons Convention of nineteen fifty-four provides these people, who's these people? Moors with a nationality card, stateless Moors, people with certain protections. What are the protections? You got civil rights. What are the protections? Basic human rights. But that's all you got. You haven't figured out yet why you're sitting out there arguing about voting rights. You wasn't supposed to get no rights. Why? Cuz you're a prisoner of war. You're a war of the state. So therefore, you'll get certain protections, which means they'll make sure you don't starve, but other than that, they not trying to promote you. As well as you get what? As well as what? You're obligated, you're obligating them. Obligating them, who's the them? Stateless people. Who's the them? Moors with a nationality card instead of state ID. Moors that are stateless do what? Obligating stateless Moors, African Americans, Negro blacks and colors, and Moors Americans with a nationality card that are stateless to abide by the laws of the country where they reside. How could they write this? How could they write it? You know how they wrote it? Because the United States of America, reference points. Cuz the United States of America has both civil and criminal jurisdiction over Moors. And to Moors do what? And to Moors do what? Come back, return to Morocco and choose the entire submission of the laws of the Moroccan empire and consent to a Moroccan state government. Let's continue. As Moors start to come back into statehood of each of the territories, you have to start asking yourself, how can we enforce it, right? How do we enforce it, right? What's our rights? Okay, listen. One of the things we have to understand. We have to start understanding that the Vienna Convention on the Laws of Treaties nineteen sixty-nine gave more specific instructions, right? It gave instructions on how to enforce your Moroccan treaties. The Vienna Convention on the Laws of Treaties of nineteen sixty-nine does not supersede Moroccan treaties. It only tells you how to enforce your treaties. But what is it about your treaties that you're enforcing, okay? We're gonna come back to this in just a moment. What are you enforcing? The first instructions Moors have, we're being redundant. This is very important information we're going over. The first instructions Moors had based upon equality. Remember, treaties are about equality. This is about the triple principle that even Moors have to be bound to. And it started with chapter seven, general provisions of the Act of Al-Jasiras of nineteen oh six. It gave more specific instructions, alright? We're gonna read through it relatively quickly, we've been through this before, go ahead, mother.
Article one twenty. With a view to harmonizing its legislation, if the occasion arises with the engagements contracted under the Present General Act, each of the signatory powers engages to take the necessary steps leading to the enactment of such legislation as may be necessary so far as it is concerned.
So Moors also are bound to this. Keep in mind, the Sultan of Morocco in nineteen fifty-six proclaimed his independence, right? He declared it. What did he have to do next? He had to follow the instructions of this treaty. He had to go through what? He established a state called the Kingdom of Morocco, and it has a constitution. It has its defined territory, right? So what did he do? The Sultan who turned king had what? Concerns. And with those concerns, he knew it was necessary to enact a legislation. And what was that legislation he enacted? The first thing was his abstract, he wanted independence. That was the first legislation in his head. And then that transferred what? To a pen. What did he do with this pen? Okay, you find out next, this is the obligation of Moors. Follow me, these instructions. Moors have concerns, you need legislation, what do you have to do next? Mother.
Article one twenty-one. The Present General Act shall be ratified according to the constitutional laws of each state. The ratification shall be deposited at Madrid as soon as practicable and at the latest by December thirty-first, one thousand nine hundred and six.
Okay, thank you. So the Sultan of Morocco who turned king, he did what? He had concerns, he enacted legislation. What in that act did he do? In nineteen sixty, in nineteen sixty-one, he enacted a constitution, right? So he was following the instructions, he did what? The Present General Act shall be ratified according to the constitutional laws of what? Of a state. He was following instructions. This is the Sultan following instructions, now turned king. What should Moors take away from this immediately? We have to do the same thing. All of the African states, there's fifty-four states, really fifty-five South Sudan. What did they all do? They all came back to statehood with constitutions. They were all colonized. They all came back into statehood. Moors have to do the same thing. How were we colonized? What is the math? We were colonized. All these borders are colonist borders. All of these corporate states, for example, Texas is what you call a colonist state. Cause they're claiming these borders with their constitution. We have to take it back over. We have to now restore it back to being a Moroccan state. How do you do that? Same way the Africans did it. Constitutions. The same way the Sultan of Morocco turned king. How did he do it? Constitution. Why? They will all follow instructions. What instructions? These instructions. These are treaties. Supreme law of land. Okay, after you have a constitution of what? A state. What do you have to do next? You have to ratify it, right? Ratification shall be deposited. They said, you can think about it? No. You should do it? No. Maybe do it? No. It said shall. The word shall is the highest order in any legislation. The word shall is no workaround. It must be done. You shall be deposited. Have Moors been depositing our legislation? No. We've been violating our own Moroccan laws. Deposit where? At Madrid. Where's Madrid now? United Nations Charter. Let me have, ask you a question. Is Madrid in Morocco? Yes. Is United Nations Charter headquarters, is their headquarters in Morocco? Yes. Where is the United Nations headquarters located? In the corporate state of New York. Where is the corporate state of New York? In Morocco. So Moors don't get all twisted out of shape when it says Madrid. Madrid is in Morocco. Where is the United Nations headquarters? In Morocco. The location changed, but the process remained the same. As soon as practical, so you need to deposit. Moors gotta learn how to ratify, deposit. Moors gotta learn how to ratify, deposit. Moors gotta learn how to ratify and deposit. Why? Because it's in order. We shall do it. Okay, what's next?
A pro se verbo shall be made of such deposit. And a certified copy sent to each of the signatory powers through the diplomatic channel.
Okay, so what's happening? Once you deposit with the United Nations. Cause United Nations headquarters is in Morocco. They, they have an obligation to do what? They have to send your deposited legislation to who? All of the signatory powers. Who are the signatory powers? Anybody that's also part of that contract. Also, you got your contract, right? You got the treaties, Moors. You got your treaties. So your treaties are contracts. For the Christians, the signatory power sign these. And when we became contracting states and contracting powers to this too. The United Nations has an obligation to send through the diplomatic channels to let everybody know that who's on the record. A new Moors state. That's their obligation. But Moors should also have the obligation to notify the contracting states as well. We'll talk about that. Okay, mother?
Article one twenty-two. The present general act shall enter into effect as soon as all the ratifications shall have been deposited. And at the very latest on December thirty-first, one thousand nine hundred and six.
Okay. So as soon as Moors do what? Soon as Moors do what? Ratify and deposit. Our law, it immediately comes what? It immediately goes, it enters into effect immediately. Then you can start to use what? Constitutional court. The answer to the test, the answer to our problems, the answer to our pain points, all this time has been in our Moors treaties. Let's take it from here. In case.
In case the special legislative measures which may be necessary in certain countries. To ensure the application to their nationals living in Morocco. Of certain stipulations of this present general act. Shall not have been enacted by the date fixed for ratification. These stipulations shall only become applicable in respect to them after the legislative measures above. Referred to shall have been promulgated.
Mm-hmm, so what's happening? Moors can enforce treaties. Moors can enforce state governments. Moors can enforce. Their constitutions until they notify someone that they're in existence. That is international law. Once we ratify our states, we gotta let the other parties know that you exist. You're not looking for their, their, um. Response to give you, to give you a cent. You're not looking for their permission, in other words. You're giving them notice. That's what promulgated meant, okay? Listen. In case the special legislative measure which may be necessary in certain countries. To ensure the application to their nationals. Living in Morocco of certain stipulations of this present general act. Shall not have been enacted by the date fixed for ratification. So therefore, if you haven't ratified it. And you haven't deposited, what happens? These stipulations shall only become applicable in respect to them after the legislative measures. Above referred to shall have been promulgated. What is promulgated? That meant you have to give everybody notice. It's not active unless you let, let somebody else know you in the game. Moors have not been ratifying and depositing states' constitutions. You just can't make a unilateral decision, say you're a state. You still gotta let the world know that you're a state. You're not looking for their permission, but you must promulgate. Meaning give notice. That's the reason why you can be positive with the United Nations, so they can now be what? The publication to let everybody know that you're on the record. They give everybody notice. Okay, one twenty-three.
Article one through twenty-three and last. All treaties, conventions, and arrangements of the signatory powers with. Morocco remain in force. It is understood however, that in case of conflict between their provisions and those of the present general act. The stipulations of the latter shall prevail. In faith whereof, the delegates who are the potentialary have signed the present general act.
Okay, thank you. So, one twenty-three is a very important article. Very important article. Article one twenty-three, and last. All treaties. Conventions and arrangements of the signatory powers with Morocco. So all of the Christian powers. All of the Christian powers such as the United States of America and the United States. With who? Morocco, i.e. the Moors. Remain in force. It is understood however. That in case of conflict between their provisions, so the provisions of what? All of the treaties, all the treaties that remain in force, all the previous treaties, what treaties? We already know the answer, but let's talk about it anyway. Let's talk about it anyway. What treaty? Got four treaties in Miami. Seventeen eighty-seven, eighteen thirty-six, eighteen eighty, and now nineteen oh six. That's what we're talking about. All these previous treaties are in force. Let's take it from here. It is understood however, that in case of conflict between their provisions. And those of the present general act. So what's the present general act? Act Al-Ghazirahs. The stipulations of the latter shall prevail. So what shall prevail? The Act Al-Ghazirahs shall prevail over all other treaties. Even though all the other treaties are in force. That's very important to understand. Alright? Okay. So now, as Moors put together their states. You have to understand that the Vienna Convention on the Laws of Treaties nineteen sixty-nine. Comes in and starts explaining how you enforce that, okay? How do you enforce it? But some go and say, well, the United States is not gonna let us put together those states. We've already went through the IC, ICJ report that says, how do you enforce it? Through constitutional court. You don't worry about the United States. You do what you're supposed to do. You follow the instructions, okay? So the Vienna Convention of the Laws of Treaties nineteen sixty-nine gets into more instructions. Alright, we're gonna go over that, okay? But one of the things I wanna show the Moors is this. This is the Treaty of Montevideo. Nineteen thirty-three. We're going to read it in its entirety. It's about sixteen articles. We're just gonna read it briefly. I'll narrate somewhat, but I just need you to see it for yourself. So you can understand the obligations that even the United States of America understands as Moors come into statehood. Alright? Mother, from the top.
Treaty of Montevideo nineteen thirty-three. Convention on rights and duties of states. Signed at city of Montevideo, Republic of Uruguay. Who, after having exhibited their full powers, which were found to be in good and due order, have agreed upon the following.
Stop. So this treaty is amongst the United States of America and about eleven other. States. Mainly states of what we call Central America and North America, even though America is just a placeholder name, alright? So it's really a mix. And some of the islands such as Haiti and the Dominican Republic, alright? There's been other states that have, have now concluded to accede to this, but this is what Moors really need to understand. This is what you call. Customary law of international law. These are customs, okay? Customs. Alright. From here, mother.
Who, after having exhibited their full powers, which were found to be in good and due order, have agreed upon the following. Article one. The state as a person of international law should possess the following qualifications. A, a permanent population. B, a defined territory. C, government. And D, capacity to enter interrelations with the other states.
Okay, and that's the definition of state, okay? Continue.
Article two, the federal state shall constitute a sole person in the eyes of international law.
So a state is one person in international law that looks out for what? The political interest of the people of the state. Okay, let's continue.
Article three. The political existence of a state is independent of recognition by the other states. Even before recognition, the state has the right to defend its integrity and independence. To defend for its, to provide for its conservation and prosperity. And consequently to organize itself as it sees fit. To legislate upon its interests, administer its services, and to define the jurisdiction and competence of its courts.
Article three is a very powerful article. It tells you the rights of Moors when Moors come back into statehood of your constitution. And you declare that you have an organic state? Article three says a lot. Listen. Article three, the political existence. So states are political. The political existence of the state is independent of recognition by other states. Even before recognition, the state has the right to defend its integrity. And independence. To provide for its conservation and prosperity. And consequently to organize itself as it sees fit. To legislate. Upon its interest. Administer its services. And to define the jurisdiction and competence of its courts. You're not waiting for someone to give you permission to move forward. With your sovereignty and independence. Or the integrity of your domains. Or to enforce the economic liberty without any inequality of your state. Moors move forward. Because we are the sovereign, and that's what sovereigns do. You don't wait for permission. You enact legislation, and you act upon that legislation. We move forward. Let's continue.
The exercise, excuse me. The exercise of these rights has no other limitation than the exercise of the rights of other states according to international law. Article four. States are juridically equal. Enjoy the same rights and have equal capacity in their exercise. The rights of each one do not depend upon the power which it possesses to assure its exercise. But upon the simple fact of its existence as a person under international law.
Mm-hmm.
Article five. The fundamental rights of states are not susceptible of being affected in any manner whatsoever.
Okay, that's Moors states. We can't be affected. Continue.
Article six. The recognition of a state merely signifies that the state which recognizes it. Accepts the personality of the other with all the rights and duties determined by international law. Recognition is unconditional and irrevocable.
Alright, continue.
Article seven. The recognition of a state may be expressed or tacit. The latter results from any act which implies the intention of recognizing the new state.
Okay, let's pause right here. Article seven, listen. Article seven. The recognition of a state may be expressed. Or tacit. What does that mean? So the United States of America and its several states. Could express that they recognize Moors states. Or it could be tacit that they don't recognize us, but Moors keep moving forward. And we get into diplomatic relations nonetheless. We keep pushing constitutional court orders. We keep moving forward. So they tacitly agree that we've taken over, but they don't technically wanna admit it. So tacitly, they've agreed. Was that called acquiescence? Isn't that what the ICJ said the Moors did? The Moors had tacitly agreed that the United States could have the jurisdiction. But soon we come back into statehood, now the United States, it reverses on them. If they don't reject us, that means they've accepted tacitly that our states are supreme. The latter results from any act which implies the intention of recognizing, recognizing the new state. So the what? The latter. What's the latter? The tacit. It's still about recognition. They still recognize you even if they don't say a word. Because they have a deadline. We'll talk about that. Continue, mother.
Article eight. No state has the right to intervene in the internal or external affairs of another. Article nine. The jurisdiction of states within the limits of national territory applies to all the inhabitants. Nationals and foreigners are under the same protection of the law. And the national authorities and the foreigners may not claim rights other than or more extensive than those of the nationals.
Alright, so when Moors states are fully ratified. Reality is, the citizens of the United States. Fall under our jurisdiction of our state because they're within our international boundaries. They're within our international borders. They come under our Moroccan law, whether they like it or not. Why? Because they already agreed in the treaties that they are bound to Moroccan law. That they are in Morocco. Moors have to remember, they. Citizens of the United States of America, their corporate states are where? In Morocco. So we always have the jurisdiction over them. What happens? We absorb them. We integrate them into our states. Isn't that what they did to us? Exactly. Let's continue.
Article ten. The primary interest of states is the conservation of peace. Differences of any nature which arise between them should be settled by recognized pacific methods. Article eleven. The contracting states definitely establish. As the rule of their conduct, the precise obligation not to recognize territorial acquisitions. Or special advantages which have been obtained by force. Whether this consists in the employment of arms and threatening diplomatic representations. Or in any other. or in any other effective coercive measures. The territory of a state is inviolable and may not be the object of military occupation nor of other measures of force imposed by other state, directly, another state, directly or indirectly, or for any motive whatever, even temporarily.
Okay, article eleven is very important for Moors to understand. Remember, we got sixteen articles. Article eleven is very important. What's this talking about? Capitulations. What's this talking about? Them taking over our lands through use of force with their war machine. They can't do it, even temporarily. Especially now that we're coming back into statehood, they can't maintain a military force to try to coerce us or try to force us to force assimilation. They can't force themselves upon us. Listen. Article eleven. The contracting states definitely established, defiantly established as a rule of their conduct, the precise obligations not to recognize territorial acquisitions. What's a territorial acquisition under use of force? Or special advantages which have been obtained by force, whether this consists in the employment of arms. The United States of America took over Morocco with what? Arms. And threatening diplomatic representation. So Moors, if we come into statehood, they can't threaten what? They can't threaten our diplomatic representation. That's including our courts. None of our officers. They can't threaten or any, or any other effective coercive measure. They can't do anything to try to threaten us because we're coming back into statehood. The territory of a state is inviolable and may not be the object of military occupation nor other measures of force imposed by another state. So the United States of America nor any of their several corporate states such as Alabama can't try to coerce Moors from going into full statehood. Directly or indirectly, or for any motive whatever, even temporarily. They gotta get out the way. Can't be no impediments. That must be understood. Article eleven is very important. Remember, the United States of America has ratified and deposited this treaty. It's in full force with them. If they have to abide by this. Let's continue.
Article twelve. The present convention shall not affect obligations previously entered into by the high contracting parties by virtue of international agreements. Article thirteen. The present convention shall be ratified by the high contracting parties in conformity with their respective constitutional procedures.
Stop. You see that, Moors? Thirteen. The present convention shall be ratified by the high contracting parties in conformity with their respective constitutional procedures. Everything's about constitutions. The Moors have been sending writs and affidavits to the Congress thinking that that's how we was gonna enforce things. No, that's not the answer to the test. The answer to the test was what? Constitution enforcement. Who's constitution? Moorish constitutions. Continue, mother.
The Minister of Foreign Affairs of the Republic of Uruguay shall transmit authentic certified copies to the governments for the aforementioned purpose of ratification. The instrument of ratification shall be deposited in the archives of the Pan American Union in Washington, which shall notify the signatory governments of said deposit. Such notifications shall be considered as an exchange of ratifications.
So what are they talking about? They're going right back to the Act of Adversaries. Articles one twenty to one twenty-three talked about what? Talked about what? Ratification and deposit. They're following instructions. What's the problem? Moors haven't been following these instructions. We've been out marching and praying in the street and holding banners. We've been out talking about sending writs and affidavits, and we were stateless. You can't send a writ and affidavit unless it's coming from what? A state. And that's state's obligation to send that writ and affidavit through what? Minister of Decrees from Constitutional Court. We've been violating our own rights. Every state on planet Earth knows it's all about statehood, constitutions, ratification, and what? Depository. Why isn't our Moorish teachers' teachings about ratification and depository? Why aren't our Moorish teachers' teachings about statehood? This is the answer to the test. All states around the world know this, except for the Moors. But now, it's time for the Moors to now move forward and to get into statehood. We're reading the answers to the test. Let's continue.
Article fourteen. Present convention will enter into force between the high contracting parties in the order in which they deposit their respective ratifications.
Stop. The present convention will enter into force between the high contracting parties. Who are parties? States. Who are the high contracting parties? States. In the order in which they deposit their respective ratifications. There's that deposit and ratification again. We're following the orders of Moorish treaties. But yet, the Moors aren't following the instructions of Moorish treaties. Let's continue. Article fifteen.
The present convention shall remain in force indefinitely, but may be denounced by means of one year's notice given to the Pan American Union, which shall transmit it to the other signatory governments. After the expiration of this period, the convention shall cease in its effects as regards the party which denounces, but shall remain in effect for the remaining high contracting parties.
So according to this treaty, if you wanna get out of this particular treaty, you have to give a twelve-month advance notice, alright? So the purpose of us reading it, Moors gotta go back, add this to your library, that way you can understand some of the provisions of this particular treaty, okay? Because everything is about treaty provisions, not the constitution of the United States of America. It's about treaties, Moors, treaties. But watch this, as we start to wrap up. We talked about the Vienna Convention on the Laws of Treaties of nineteen sixty-nine. Okay. This is something that Moors have to understand right here. As we start to wrap up. Article twenty of the Vienna Convention of nineteen sixty-nine now tells you the timeline that the United States of America, the United States and their several corporate states, what's the timeline they have to try to reject Moors? Even though they can't reject Moors, however, they got every right to try, right? Nothing wrong with trying to reject Moors. Let's find out the timeline they have, okay? Okay. Article twenty, mother.
Acceptance of and objection to reservations. One. A reservation expressly authorized by a treaty does not require any subsequent acceptance by the other contracting states unless the treaty so provides.
So section one of the Vienna Convention of nineteen sixty-nine say, well, we don't need no one to recognize who we are. We just need to recognize ourselves and get to work. Period. Let's read again. A reservation expressly authorized by a treaty. So you're reserving the treaty to make yourself the authority of your contracting state, your contracting party of the treaty, right? So a reservation expressly authorized by a treaty does not require any subsequent acceptance by the other contracting states unless the treaty so provides. So our treaty, our Act of Adversaries nineteen oh six, sections one twenty to one twenty-three doesn't say anything about getting the permission of the United States of America first. We went over the ICJ, France versus United States of America. We don't have to get their permission first. We can just start to move forward with the reservation of the treaty and enforce it, move forward, okay? Let's continue. Okay, we'll go section one, and here's section four. These are specific sections, okay? Section four of the article twenty.
In cases not falling under the preceding paragraphs and unless the treaty otherwise provides, B, an objection by another contracting state to a reservation does not preclude the entry into force of the treaty as between the objecting and reserving states unless a contrary intention is definitely expressed by the objecting state.
Okay. You gotta understand this. So section four of article twenty of the Treaty of Vienna nineteen sixty-nine, in cases not falling under the preceding paragraphs and unless the treaty otherwise provides, section B, an objection by the contracting state. So if the United States wanted to object. So if the United States wanted to object, let's start all over. An objection by another contracting state, an objection by the United States to a reservation to Moorish reserving treaties in their states does not preclude the entry into force of the treaty. They can't stop us from enforcing the treaty. As between the objecting and reserving state. So who's the objecting state? The United States of America. Who's the reserving state? Moor states. And the reserving states still can enter into force their treaties even though the United States rejects. Okay, let's start from the top. An objection by another contracting state to a reservation does not preclude the entry into force of the treaty as between the objecting and reserving states unless a contrary intention is definitely expressed by the objecting state. So the United States of America has to express something that's definitely in a treaty that says, Moors can't do it. And we all know it don't exist, so the United States of America knows they can't object us, right? But check this out. Section five, this is where I'm trying to make my point. Here we go. This is section five of article twenty of the Vienna Convention of nineteen sixty-nine. Article twenty, section five. Here we go.
For the for the purpose of paragraphs two and four and unless the treaty otherwise provides, a reservation is considered to have been accepted by a state if it shall have raised no objection to the reservation by the end of a period of twelve months after it was notified of the reservation or by the date on which it expressed its consent to be bound by the treaty, whichever is later.
You see what happened? Let's read it out loud. It's common sense. We're gonna read it anyway. Section five. For the purposes, purposes of paragraph two and four and unless the treaty otherwise provides, a reservation, reservation means to accede. Ratify, acceptance, right? Is considered to have been accepted by a state. So it's accepted by the United States of America. It's accepted by the United States of America. Listen. If it shall have raised no objection to the reservation by the end of a period of twelve months after it has been notified. So how do we notify them? Okay. The word is, we have to deposit, promulgate. Give them notice through what? Well, one of the ways is, United Nations Charter, Article one oh two. It's because the Secretariat, the Secretary General of the United Nations according to Article one oh two, they have the obligation to notify all of the contracting parties because you put it on the record. How else can we notify them? Send it directly to the United States of America, the United States, and whatever state that you have now made a constitution with. So, for example, Moors in this territory right here, commonly known as Texas. Once it becomes a Moorish state with a constitution, the Moors now deposit their constitution with those administrators. You send it to them, certified mail. That's called a depository. You've given them notice, and guess what? The clock starts. They got three hundred and sixty-five days to reject you. They have what? Twelve months after it was notified. Who notified? The United States of America, the United States, and whatever state that you have now restored the law. The law restoration of statehood. So as you see, the United States of America is on the clock. Now I need all the Moors to understand something about ANPAC as we start to wrap up. ANPAC already gave notice to administrators of the corporate state known as the State of Colorado in March twenty twenty-one. Their time is up. We also gave notification to the United States and the United States of America. Their time is up. But we also put our constitution, et cetera, on the record with the United Nations in August of twenty twenty-one. So therefore, we've already done a deposit with them directly. And then we deposited with the United Nations in August. So the reality is, we've already given them notice. When we also recognize, ANPAC recognizes as an organic state, we also have to give the Charter notice. We were at varying stages of advancement, so we gave the Charter notice in August. August twenty-first, to be exact. So guess what? The United States of America have already been given notice. Their twelve months is up. It's up, period. However, from an international law perspective, if the UN said, well, let's go with the August date. Well, guess what? No worries. They have until August twentieth of twenty twenty-two to reject. And they'll reject, and that's called tacit, tacit acceptance. I.e., they have now done what? Acquiesced. And now, ANPAC is officially on the record as a state because the other contracting state, which the United States of America, never rejected. You must understand this, Moors. So what's the answer to the test as we start to close? Did it say use the United States of America's constitution to get your rights? No. Did it say use the statutes of the United States of America? No. Did it say use stare decisis? No. Did it say use res judicata? No. It's talking about treaty provisions. And if that's the case, that's what Moors have to enforce. So as we close out, lastly, what have we been talking about? Nineteen fifty-two, France versus the United States of America is about what? A blueprint on how Moorish state governments can enforce the divinity of Moorish nationals through statehood and the competent Constitutional Courts ministerial decrees. And by that way, and that way only, can the Moorish laws become binding against the United States, the United States of America, and your several corporate states in the empire of Morocco. Question. Is quote-unquote enforced, excuse me, is quote-unquote enforcement of the constitution of the United States of America or the United States the answer to the test? Answer, no. What's the correct answer? Moorish state governments. And what should those Moorish state governments do? Okay. They have to do what? They have to use Constitutional Courts, ministerial decrees. And by, and by that way, and that way only, can the Moorish laws become binding against the United States. I am with that. Islam.
Islam.